This is a committee that's very special to me because I was on it prior to being elected. I was actually the vice chair for a number of years. And there was always a struggle to figure out where we fit in the grand scheme of things in the city. There's always been the desire of the members to become more active and engaged in the community. And but we were somewhat limited by the fact that we're an advisory committee. But the members did have some items that they wanted to talk about. And potentially see what the commission and the mayor think about a proposal that they have to get some more community engagement and become more involved in the community. And with that, I will turn it over to Kevin Harris, who is an appointed member of the Criminal Justice Advisory Committee. I'm not sure if Beverly Morrison, who's the vice chair, will be here today, but we'll let Kevin go ahead and take it.
Sure. Thank you so much, Commissioner Peruzzi, commissioners, Mr. Mayor. Great to be able to spend some time with you all this morning. As Commissioner Peruzzi stated, we spent some time during a retreat just sort of kicking around some different ideas on how we could create some more community engagement between the community and law enforcement. And one of the ideas that we kind of coalesced around was something that we call Crime and Grime Community Walks. And prior to moving to West Palm Beach, I worked in two administrations. I worked for the mayor of Washington DC, but also spent some time in Baltimore City Government. And during those times, a part of my portfolio was always community engagement, constituency services, and things like that. And so I've seen this concept work in other cities. And just based on some of the feedback that we've gotten from various communities and stakeholders here, we think it's something that could also be successful in West Palm. So first, I'm going to start with just top lines, what is a crime and grime walk? So crime and grime walks bring together community and government leaders in a visible demonstration of commitment to a clean and safe city. The second bullet is really my favorite because it says, "Crime and grime walks are intended to present a whole-of-government approach to public safety rooted in the belief that areas with high crime also suffer most from grime and blight." And this last point is my favorite, "Public safety is not just law enforcement's responsibility." I have found over time that law enforcement sort of appreciates that sentiment and that support, but also the community appreciates seeing that the highest levels of their government are really sort of taking a whole-of-government approach to keeping them safe. During the walks, government agencies are mobilized to concentrate resources and remove blight in partnership with community leaders. And then the last bullet is, "Law enforcement is present and visible during the walks, which presents an opportunity to engage the public about crime issues in that community, which often overlay with blight." One of the things that I've seen in my work in other jurisdictions is when you have law enforcement out there and present, while these resources are being mobilized, oftentimes, community leaders will come up to them and they will share intel about public safety. A lot of times, what we also see is that after you have done one of these crime and grime walks, you see an uptick of people reaching out to law enforcement, calling in with intelligence and different things like that. Also, when a community is cleaner, when blight is removed, people are less likely to do crime. They feel like that's a part of the area in the community that's being cared for. They're a lot less likely to do nefarious activities. What we also know is that there have been various studies that show that the link between crime and grime. And so what we have here is a couple of headlines from some recent studies, and you can see some of the pull quotes. The first one, it says, "A Saginaw Valley State University study has found a connection between a recent drop in violent crime in the city of Saginaw and an initiative to eliminate blight in the city." The second one is from a study that LSU recently did in Baton Rouge, where they said, "If you are within three and a half block radius of a convenience store, the risk of homicide increases fivefold. Similarly, if you live within two and a half blocks of a blighted building, the risk increases by thirteen times." This last slide that I just wanted to share with you, again, this is, these are headlines that happened from my time in Baltimore City, where we had the mayor and the city council leading on some of these crime and grime walks. And what you show is that what you see from these quotes is that the community is very appreciative. They understand that the problems won't get fixed overnight. They understand that the problems are complex, that it's going to take more than a walk, but they really appreciate the visibility. And you see that reflected in the responses that they gave to the media when they were asked about being out there. So typically, the way these would work, I mean, you would have folks out there from housing. You would have fire would be out there handing out fire smoke detectors. You would have code enforcement out there issuing code violations. And it was always done in partnership with the neighborhood associations. Those would be the people that would sort of anchor it, would walk through the community. They would show leaders what the problem spots have been, what the hotspots have been. And then within that, you're seeing some action being taken to clean up lots, cut down overrun, grass, all those different things. And you're doing it with law enforcement. And like I said, oftentimes, people really do sort of appreciate understanding that it's not just police that are sort of leading, that everybody's sort of taking a role in keeping the community safe. So that was the concept, pretty straightforward, clear, simple. Would love to partner with you all to figure out some of the best ways and the best parts of the community where we could possibly initiate some of this. And then the last thing I'll say is that a number of initiatives that we've worked with the police department really sort of take this concept. One of the things we did was the Tamarind Slam, which I know I think pretty much all of you were there, but that was like a good example of it. It was multiple city agencies that were supporting that. You all were there, law enforcement was there. But it was a great, different way for to have the community sort of engage and engage with their law enforcement. So we think that this could have a similar effect. It's just a question of figuring out how do you sort of structure it and scale it here.
Thank you for that presentation. And you did allude to some efforts, I know that on the chief Adelwee's leadership, some community engagement efforts that we've been having. And I didn't know how familiar you might have been with those and how this would differ. It sounds like this would maybe have the additional twist or tweak of addressing, whether it's code violations or other types of things. So I think the first things that would start with a conversation with the chief. And I think Kevin Jones is part of it. I know we used to do these walks in the various communities years ago to see how it might be tweaked, but certainly supportive of the concept. And as long as our police department is on board and code is on board. Commissioner Ward and Commissioner Peruzzi.
Thank you. And I do want to add on to that because I was trying to, while your presentation is, you know, we have Keep West Palm Beach Beautiful, and Dwayne White has been working with our police, at least in the area in the north, and with Spitera doing these crime walks. And so I don't know what the difference, I want them to continue, and I think everyone wants them to continue because, you know, they went underneath, underpassing over lakes and cleaned up and walked around. And then I went back a week later and we've got the same issue again. And so it's going to take over and over again. So I guess I'm trying to understand, I wish we had someone from the police representative here to understand what they're doing right now and how they're, and what the initiative is now with that versus what crime and grime would entail. Like, there's differences between those two.
Commissioner Peruzzi?
I think the intent is to build upon what we've been doing in the past with these community walks, when they've been more focused on just a visible presence in our communities with police and police getting to interact with our neighborhoods and with our residents. I think this is something that can be that, but it also can be more. It can be an opportunity to, you know, to figure out where there are problems in the community, things that could be addressed by other departments, not only, you know, our police department, as you mentioned, you know, code enforcement, or if there's areas that need to be, you know, cleaned up, if there's, you know, trash. And I think that the whole concept is if you have a visually, you know, nice environment, then it's more likely that people are going to act in conformity with their environments.
It's a broken window syndrome.
Yeah.
Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much for this presentation. Actually, this summer, I started a new project in the historic northwest. I was calling Adopt a Block. And so I was working with their neighborhood association, our CRA director, and the police department as well. And we started with one block on Sixth Street. Officer Buxman came out with us to do a SEPTED assessment. And we walked with the neighbors, Public Works was there, Keep West Palm Beach Beautiful team was there. And we identified a lot of issues, just exactly what you're saying. There was a lot of blight and those issues. The reason we picked this street is because there were particular issues that we already knew about. So that we wanted to identify how the police department might, you know, make recommendations. And so we did, were able to, for example, there was a lot of graffiti on all the stop signs. They were fixed within a week. There was illegal dumping. There was actually an illegal dump truck that had been sitting in somebody's driveway for months that had been left there by absentee landlord. And so we had that ticketed and removed by code. The police officer actually sent our police dogs the next day and made several arrests based on a house that we passed by, that there was a lot of illegal activity going on while we walked by. Right now, we are also working on sidewalks. There is many sidewalks on that street, but there weren't any sidewalks. There were just sinkholes in the sidewalks. And so a lot of what you're saying is it was leading to a lot of just not positive feelings about the street. People weren't feeling proud to walk home at night. People are scared to have their kids in the street. So it's something that I would love, I would love to see this instituted citywide in some way. We also have this new program that the mayor's office put in last year, the West Palm Beach Key. I don't know if you're familiar with it, but to me, it's something that I think if more people in our city could know about it, essentially, it's like you could take a picture of a pothole or a graffiti or a sidewalk missing, and it can go right to the department that needs to fix it. And so instead of, I mean, we may not be able to go to every single street with this program that you're talking about, but if we could let people know that they could be their own black captains and help us identify what is, you know, the issues on their street, and we could all work together, I would really love to see something like this. Look forward to talking to you more. Thank you.
Commissioner Lambrou?
Thank you so much. First of all, I just want to say thank you to Kevin. You know, I met him a couple of years ago when he first moved to the area. And he's a great example of our residents who come with great experience from outside areas and who dive in, who really want to make a difference. So thank you for jumping in. I'm so happy to see you presenting today. What, you know, it's interesting because I went to the CRA meeting this weekend. And as I was driving through the neighborhood, I was remembering some of the peace walks that we used to have. And I think what we've all touched on is there are amazing aspects in each of these projects that we're already doing, Adopt a Block, Keep West Palm Beach Beautiful. I know that the mayor has walked with department heads and identified issues. But maybe what the next step is, is a coordinated effort, a cadence of accountability, schedule of some sort, and looking at our prioritized areas. Because it sounds like we're all doing some of this in many different aspects of the city and just putting some kind of coordinated effort to it. So I appreciate you bringing this up today.
Thank you.
Any other questions, observations? I would say, and I don't know, maybe Ms. Johnson, if you could coordinate a meeting with the chief, Kevin, or anybody else from CJAC to at least compare notes, see if there are some possible next steps. Commissioners, if you, I know you're doing Adopt a Block in your district. If you have a desire to see more of this type of community engagement in your district, please let me and Ms. Johnson know, and we can kind of fold that into the discussion. And then we'll report back as to what action is planned. Does that make sense? Commissioner Lambrou?
I'll just say now, Ms. Johnson, I'm interested.
Okay. Duly noted. Commissioner Ward?
I know that they, because Spitera has said that they're doing this and have them scheduled, maybe we all participate in the next one that the police already have scheduled with you all to see if there's ways that we can enhance what they're already working on in the area. That might be an option. Or if we have, you know, the chief Adelwee come and speak at one of our next work sessions, we have that as a topic of discussion. Because like I said, they are doing that, and that's gone to that direction. And it was stemmed first from Keep West Palm Beach Beautiful. But we've had code, we have fire, I don't believe we've had, or sorry, we've had code and police, but I don't believe we've had fire. And even, you know, Penny Redford's department out there, because they always have free stuff to give away. But right now, it is starting. So you're right, to have more of a coordinated effort and then to have accountability for it to continue is important as well.
All right. And Ms. Johnson, if you could find out when the next one is scheduled for the North End and communicate that information to me and the commissioner so we can at least be aware. Because you said, is one already scheduled, Commissioner?
Yeah, they've had, they've had two so far, and they said they were going to continue going out. That was one of their new strategies. So I assume that they already have it scheduled, but I'm not sure.
And who's organizing that? Spitera? Okay. So if you could just check with me.
I'll follow up.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you again for bringing this to our attention. And we will govern ourselves accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item is art life's accomplishments over the last year in community building Frame Your Neighborhood project, which is exciting. I think it's exciting. But Sibylle will make it even more exciting. So Ms. Walter?
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners, Sibylle, Director of Arts, Culture, and Community Building. Let me get to my spot here. So when I was putting together the annual report, which is always exciting to look back because the art life program ebbs and flows. Something's beginning, or something's in the middle, or something is coming to completion. And so a lot of what I am presenting today, I haven't presented to anyone before because I realize that you often, as commissioners, see the renderings and concept, and then you go right to, hey, it's completed, and you don't see the in-between. And I think it's really important, and this came out of a lot of different questions that the public asks, that you see what happens in the in-between because there's a tremendous amount of work and coordination. It's not just being creative. So I have seven art life committee members and two alternates. They are appointed by the mayor. And they're a mixed group. Some of them have art backgrounds, not artists, but they have curatorial, historical. Some of them are business people, architects. It's a really eclectic group. I conduct my meetings very intentionally, very similar to this, where we see each other. So there's a lot of dialogue and discussion because art does need to be discussed. So the first piece, just as a reminder, and this is, I'm going to be candid here. This is a big deal, folks. Fred Eversley is a big deal for the city of West Palm Beach. The Related Companies has commissioned a tremendous artist in partnership with the city and the CRA. And Fred Eversley's piece, his largest public commission in his entire art career, will happen in the city, and it is slated for summer of 2024. So it's really close. Then the next piece is Rodrigo Garza, excuse me. And he is creating a piece for the 300 Banyan. You saw this, it was purple. This is in its stage of, in production. Let me just show you this. So he sent me a clip from his studio. There's a lot that happens in some of these studios. And you can see how this one giant piece gets broken down into many and how it's welded and put together. So there's a lot of calculations and math to get to that piece that, when you see it, you'll, you won't realize that all of this happened. See the artist doing some welding towards the end here. Another one that's coming from the same developers is Wheezy411 Olive. And here, I asked her to send images of a piece that was very similar to what she's doing in West Palm Beach. I wanted to show you the perspective in which an artist is working in when they do murals that are three, four, five buildings stories high. And that this person is creating these giant flowers and butterflies, but look at the perspective, how close she is to that wall in order to then create something that you will see from blocks away. Another piece that's coming is Oliver Eliason. You saw this piece also. And this is the one that's going to One West Palm. It's a site-specific work. And that is slated for winter of 2024. Now we go into local artists' initiatives. These are things that have happened with art life since COVID happened, and we have continued it. And that's an opportunity for local artists to receive funding to create a temporary work throughout the city. We have a very eclectic group of individuals who have either been working for a long time or for the first time have received an art commission. And so they have an opportunity to create different things. You'll see that we have a West Palm Beach quilt. You'll see that again, that's coming to the city. She's finalizing that piece. We had a performance piece. That performance artist will also be doing a workshop at the library. I partner with the library a lot because the library rounds off the art life programs. They bring that educational component, not just to children, but to every age group. We know our beloved Bears Picnic that sits right outside with us at Jose Marti Park. The young lady, Ashley Sanford, that was her first art commission ever. And so she learned a lot on how to budget, how to source, how to prepare. And so she's got a five-panel piece at Jose Marti. Renee Phillips in the middle with a digital piece. She also did a workshop, and it was interesting, she did an AI technology workshop, how to integrate AI technology into the medium of painting. And the workshop was really successful. There was women over sixty who showed up, and it was a group of them, who really wanted to learn AI technology and how they can use that in their painting practice. And then the last piece that just recently went up is a watercolor by Kim Heiss. And so at the top, you see the gentleman up there. He is the documentary. He has been taking film of all the artists and he'll present a short documentary of the piece. There's another little film piece for you. I couldn't find my mouse. Oh, there it goes. Little time lapse of the artist working on her piece. You can see the artist who was doing the, who had sourced out the bears and her working. Now, this is another one. These are two local artists who collaborated with the CRA to create five-year pieces. They're sound components. This is the first time we've done a sound piece. There's one at Serenity Park and one at Blum Park. It's just a different experience to understand your space more. There's another little tidbit here. And so he layers the pieces. They're long, they're thirty minutes, and they layer one into another. Molly Aubrey, she did, this is the completed piece for Blum Park. They're made out of steel, and they're pieces that seem to be part of the entry point into Blum Park. You also saw this gentleman, Alexandra Arecha, the Cuban artist who will be bringing in sound rippers for Celeste Palm Station. And if you haven't seen this piece at night, please, I tell you, you must go see it. This is actually a West Palm Beach native. And I have a really tremendous video for him.
My name's Ben Leoni. I'm a painter and sculptor from Palm Beach, Florida. It was kind of like a back and forth a bit in my own mind about how I was going to begin this process. Ultimately, it came down to, this is a large facade, and I have to create something that's impactful on that scale. I like getting into all of the things that go wrong during the process. It's almost daily that you'll have to address adversity and figure out how to make things work. This much space left. The board is going to be too tight. I started thinking conceptually about, you know, how do I make something that's meaningful and relates back to the community and also speaks to West Palm Beach and myself? For me, that symbolism was represented in these orchids that you see everywhere in South Florida. Just been working on filling in every single little piece of the battens, making sure the orchids are right, and spending a lot of time in this site. Our connection and involvement with nature and the world around us, like, there's got to be a relationship there that's mutually beneficial to both of us, you know? Maybe even just figure out for myself, like, what it is that's important to kind of keep that going in a way that's not us versus nature. So just really working on bettering myself at that and diving deeper into what that means. It's pretty surreal. It's definitely like the element that, I don't know, it changes the project for sure.
That was a, I hope that really gave you an idea of how much the artist put into that project. And it's wonderful because he grew up here. I mean, he was really born in the city of West Palm Beach. The next one that you've already seen also is from Icon Marina, from a related group, Emmett Moore, South-based artist. And I threw in a few pictures of the transportation to give you perspective again of how giant these pieces are and what they have to go through. You also saw this one, Symbiosis. And in this one, you can see that from the artist's studio that it was fabricated in multiple pieces. And just to give you a glimpse of that. And then here is another artist, a local artist that did a, excuse me, a site-specific piece for South Olive. And you will see that it wasn't just the artist who worked on this. It took a tremendous amount of effort on her to collaborate with a lot of people who worked during the night specifically. And they worked at night because it's an east-facing wall, and it is so hot to work during the day that it was easier to not only outline, but have everyone work in the cool of the evening. And so it took, at one point, she had twenty-five individuals working on the wall simultaneously, orchestrating the whole, the whole thing so that people were in collaboration on this one particular piece. You can see all the gold leaves going around. So again, I'm trying to show you that it's often not just one person. They, you know, artists are always collaborating as well, and that they need, and they seek out different individuals to help them out. And if you haven't seen this one, this one's a beautiful piece, especially when the light hits it in the morning light. And so far, I've heard really good things about it from the community. Let me just go to the next piece. So this one, it should be marked on all your calendars because I asked for it to be marked for December 1st. Save the date. This is when Nikisha Duret's genius loci comes in to Heart and Soul Park. And this is a piece that she's been working with, with the community for a while now. Let me just, let me, let me write.
The dance, the art, or is it the piece?
No, it's just, you know, a funny animation because it's a sound piece. So one of the inspirations besides the community was a poem by David White. And he has, he has this to say about genius loci. "In the ancient world, the word genius was not used as much to describe individual people. It was used to describe places, and almost always with the word loci. And so genius loci meant the spirit of a place. We all have favorite places in the world. A seashore where you've got this ancient conversation between the ocean and the land, in a particular geography of the way that cliffs and the beaches are formed, a weather front of all these qualities that meet in that place. I think it's a very merciful thing to think of a human, to think of human beings in the same way. That is, your genius is just the way everything is met in you. All of the struggles of your ancestors in arriving together and giving birth to you. The landscape in which you were nurtured." The landscape in which you were nurtured, the dialect in which you were educated into the world, the smells of the local environment. It's the way everything meets inside us." So that was her departure point. And I just think that's so lovely because I love poetry too. So I wanted to share that with you. Now we go to one and Commissioner Lambert, I've been thinking of you when, when I wanted to present this because it's a big deal. Let me see, hopefully it opens up. So I've been working on the GIS map to make all the public art locations happen. And we, working with GIS, we've created an Art Life Story Map. If it opens up for me. It showed. So what I have done is create, to put not only the artwork that comes through here, but I started to put all the artwork just in the city. Sorry. Because I think it's important to have all the artwork available for our residents and visitors. And then you just give credit to whoever it comes to. If it just opens up.
At the top.
At the top?
Yeah, your tab at the top.
Oh, I got you. Thank you. Thanks, Armando.
Hate it when I.
So actually, this is easier to look at on your phone. So if you go on your phone, you can drop in the URL and then you're able to see everything here. And the good thing about the map is it, it won't do it on the desktop. Let's say you're here in a place like Paradise right now. If you look at it in your map, you'll see a little circle. You go to that and all the artwork that's surrounding you, walking distance shows up. So this is just an easier way to look at things. And as I said, it will keep evolving and gonna make it better and better. But I think it's at a place now that it shows everything that the city has, everything that's come in.
To those who might be watching this, can you read out the URL or state it or is it too?
Well.
How would they get that?
So they, right now, they can get it in the city's website. Under Our City, go to Art Life and it goes to the Art Installations. I'm working with our webmaster to create a short.
Again, I'm trying to anticipate there might be people watching this.
Yes. So you go to Our City, Art Life, Public Art Installations. Boom, you're there.
Okay, thank you.
And I will have a short URL soon. So anyway, I don't want to take away from that, but we have that now and it's very exciting because as I said, it's, it's got everything in the city. So if I have missed something, please just send me an email. I'm happy to add it.
So why were you thinking of Commissioner Lambert?
Because Commissioner Lambert, almost in every commission meeting that I present, asks about the map of all the art locations. I was either gonna, I was gonna call it Art Life or I was gonna call it the Lambert. So.
If I could comment on that.
Yes, you may.
You know, I will tell you, I didn't grow up with a whole lot of art in my life. And as a city commissioner, as I've heard from residents and people who move here, who are so inspired by the art that we have here. Oftentimes they ask, like, is there a place I can go to see all of the art? And so I think that this is just important for people who, you know, maybe have never been exposed to art, who don't get to go to galleries and who get to experience it in public life. So thank you so much.
No, no, thank you. It's, it's exciting. And now the fact that you can put it on your phone is even more exciting without having to download the app. That's the key. So what's upcoming?
Hold on, hold on. Commissioner Ward?
I had a, I had a thought with that. I hope you share that with like Palm Beach, the tourism department because it'd be great for them to have a link to it. For people coming here who know that, hey, I wanted to go to the Norton, I wanted to go to the Sculpture Garden and to highlight that and say, look what else you can find in West Palm Beach.
Yep, it's on my list, but thank you for the affirmation. So what's upcoming? So one of the, Art Life is working on several things with different partners. And one of them is called Play Art Connect. That's coming to the Great Lawn. And it started back a few years ago with our youngest creatives and we were asking our young folk what kind of playgrounds they would be inspired to create. And it's going into, again, the Green Lawn, but the north side, the North Climatic Side, it's a very, very specific area in the Great Lawn. That we're looking into and I'm working with the CRA, Parks and Recreation. The CRA, Parks and Recreation for, for this one in particular, and the DDA to rethink the visitor center, to create an imaginative playground. And Art Life is also, has identified a very well-known female artist for a large-scale public art installation. So that will come later on to you as well. Then I just recently did this one. It's the Echo Lake Park. We went to Echo Lake Park. There were three conceptual sculptures. That a local artist, Nestor Guzman, was able to discuss and that community has voted on it. They have another week to make their vote. These have all been vetted through the Art Life and they meet all the criteria. It's very exciting. And you see some of the folks there talking. Thank you, Commissioner Ward, for coming on that Saturday morning. I know those are hard, but it was well-received. Another one that's coming, you've seen this one too, Aqua de Vida. And this is with Public Utilities and Public Works and will be going actually this time to the north part of the city. Public Utilities and Public Works have identified where the next iteration of the Stormwater Drain Awareness Murals will be placed. And then I, I was speaking to you earlier about Gillian Kennedy Wright. She is creating the city's first West Palm Beach quilt. She has been working at this for now nine months with the community. She has had workshops at the Green Market, workshops with the library, multiple over and over. And she brings the community to help her create what will be an eighteen-feet-high, fifteen-feet-wide quilt. And a lot of it has, all the hands that you see that she's sewing together right now, those are hands from our residents. Residents also wrote down things they loved about West Palm Beach, which she's included in this quilt. So it's coming about and she had a workshop here yesterday as well. One of her final ones.
Was she commissioned by someone or?
She was commissioned by the Art Life Committee under the Commons Project, Eight Artists, Eight Spaces. So she's a local artist. She had a, she really, really wanted to do a quilt and it's gonna be a giant quilt. So it'll be exciting.
Where will it be displayed? Do you know yet?
Yes, in City Hall inside here when you come into the rotunda. And then just to remind you, two monuments and memorials that came through, Chachi's Village and the Storm of Tonya. Those are both in production right now. And Curry Park. Curry Park, we have commissioned an artist to work with a design company from Canada. To create a unique, one-piece, public art play sculpture. So it's, it meets the public art, but at the same time, it meets the criteria to be played on. So these are just like little concepts, little ideas of what will come later on down the pipeline for you. Community, and it drives right into community building because everything is just all tied into one. So another map I'm very excited about is the Neighborhoods map, all the neighborhood associations. This you can find in two different places in the city's website. This is under the Mayor's tab. And if you look at Neighborhoods first, you'll see this map. And it's also under all the GIS maps and you'll see this map. And so the changes that have occurred is that now you can go and you can click on. And you can see where you're at, who your commissioner is, what district you're in. And then if you tap over, you, I'm doing it too quickly. You can also, you can also, I'm sorry, it was the other way around. You can see who your contact is and their email. And then the other one is who your commissioner is as well. Further down, you'll see boundary maps if you'd like to look at it. And you can also do this, which gives you a demographic that's up to date and gives you all the key facts about that neighborhood. And each one is very different. So. And then on the sideline here, you can show all. You can do a show all of all the neighborhoods. Or, I'm sorry, it's a little sensitive where my fingers are. And you can zoom in. You can see it per district. You can see the outline of the city and you can go down on the tab bars as well here. So I'm excited about this. Again, this is a work in progress as we keep moving. The commission aides are helping me with this one insofar as making sure that all the names and contact information are up to date.
We do have a question from Commissioner Ward.
I was just curious, where are you pulling the data from for each neighborhood?
So it comes from a, a third-party source and it shows you how up-to-date it is. It shows you that the data that they sourced, and I don't know what happened to my PowerPoint, is from 2022, the stuff that I showed you. So it's not our sources.
And then how frequently do they update that information?
That I can get back to you on. I'm not really sure. I just saw the date and now I can't get back to my PowerPoint. Sorry. Oh, here I am. Give me a sec. Okay. So this leads me from the Neighborhoods first.
Before you go there, we have a question from Commissioner Lambert.
Don't let me go back to the map.
No, no, no worries. I just wanted to say thank you, Mayor, and thank you to Sibylle. Again, this was something I had been asking previous staff for, for many years. And I think that, you know, having Kevin Harris present earlier is a good example of residents want to get involved, but sometimes they don't know who to contact or how to get involved. And one of the ways they can easily get involved is with their local neighborhood association. And having this information readily accessible to them is really valuable and, and hopefully then they become more involved in our city. So thank you so much. Thank you.
Pleasure. So this leads me to my next thing. This is very exciting as far as community building. It's called Frame Your Neighborhood. And this one really involves all of you commissioners. The idea is to, it's a social media platform and the idea is to have the residents come back to us with what makes their neighborhood special. So they'll be invited to a social media platform where we want to hear from them what makes it so different. So we want to have them visually or by video tell us their story. I mean, is it a person? Is it a community event? Is it a certain architecture in their neighborhood? We're gonna find out. So because every community has their own story, we really want to promote this. This is a year-long social media platform. Where we're really gonna try to engage every one of our neighborhoods, every one of our districts, and this is why I'm calling upon each commissioner. Because you really each have unique districts and it would be lovely to hear from those residents. Not, you know, we're always, let me just say this, we're always gonna have a city where we're going to have to change streets. We're gonna have to fix potholes. Light bulbs will need to be changed. But what we don't hear enough of is what makes it so special? Like what is it about your neighborhood? And on Saturday morning, when I was with the Echo Lake Park neighborhood residents, I could hear the stories. Well, I've been there thirty years and my daughter grew up and now my granddaughter is here. And people were, you know, that exchange is powerful. And I would, I wanted to give everybody a camera and say, okay, now, but you know, we're here now. But I want, you know, that's what we need to hear. And it's such a lovely story. And all these different stories will weave what makes the city of West Palm Beach. So it'll, it'll be really easy. They'll be able to submit, you know, where they're, who they are, what neighborhood, what district. And ideally, in a year from now, we're just going to have this visual documentation of all this. That, you know, could easily be made into a book or, you know, an exhibition. I'm not really sure. But I think it's just a terrific way for our residents to really start celebrating themselves, you know, like how great it is. And I hope you all like climb on board on this one because I think the mayor likes this one. So Frame Your Neighborhood.
No, no, I, I was very excited. I hope you all can tell just from this presentation alone, even when it comes to the community building. Why I, I think Sibylle is just a perfect fit for our, what we used to call Neighborhoods First or whatever. A, she's on top of the technology, where she figures out how to not right-click and left-click. Anyway, but, but she just brings such creativity, ju-just out-of-the-box thinking. And this is an example, you know, in our jobs as mayor commissioners, we hear so much negative, what's wrong? People are called to complain or emailed to complain about different issues. And yes, people will have issues. What I like about this, hopefully we will get people, we're flipping the script, we're changing the narrative. Where we get people to start thinking about what do they like about their communities? And, and, and tell those stories. But if you get people in that mindset about thinking positive about their surroundings. Hopefully that will lead to more appreciation for what we have here as a city. So I was very excited when she brought this idea to me. And I, I'm, I'm just very excited about what might come out of it. Because she's right. Each of our neighborhoods, each of our districts are unique in their own way. And, and, and there are positive stories to be told, whether it's about individuals who've lived there for years, whether it's about a certain park that you go to or a certain green space that people go to. And if we could get them just to start thinking and sharing with us what, what those special places, special people are in our city. I just think it, it's almost like building another quilt. It's, it's a visual quilt that can be constructed and hopefully shared in, in a broader platform. So I was very excited about this.
Thank you, sir. So that concludes, I want to thank you for your continued support in art culture and community building. I want to say that I hope you got a better understanding of what goes in the art process. Also that the fact that the Art Life program constantly collaborates with a lot of departments. Big collaborators are the CRA, Parks and Recreation, the community events, the library extensively. The Communications Department, Communications Department helped, those, the creatives up there helped with doing the Frame, Frame Your Neighborhood visual concepts. And all the internal departments, you know, it's just, that's what keeps it churning. And I hope you enjoyed that. So thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, Commissioner Meduzi?
I had an idea. Some of my ideas are better than others. You know, I don't even know if this would be logistically possible. But we have so many art installations throughout the city that it's almost hard to even grasp the magnitude of it. There are, you saw the, the dots all over the city. Would it be possible, and it's something just to think about, to have some sort of installation that showcases all of the artwork throughout the city? The geographic location, the description of what it is, that could be visually seen in one place. You know, on a wall, on a hallway, in a, you know, something would have to be photographic documentation of, of each of these installations. Where you could read about it and like, I'm gonna need to go there and see that in person, you know, something like, like that. And then the other thing is, I'm not sure with the lifespan of some of these, you know, murals on the wall. I love some of the murals we have throughout the city and I was just thinking about that the other day, is how long is it gonna last? And have we had professional photography taken of it so that we could have something in the future to say, oh, do you remember when that was there twenty years ago on that building? Because some of the artwork is just so incredible, it would be a shame to lose it forever. And so maybe if there was some way of having, having a visual depiction of the artwork that's in pretty much a, kind of an art installation in and of itself that shows the artwork throughout the city.
What about a coffee table book with those professional pictures?
That could do it.
That's something to think about down the road. But, but short-term, I think that's feasible to do actually in the urban living room. The piece right now from Renee Phillips Mindscape, that monitor is actually owned by the city. And so the idea was to, in between, usage of an artist's installation. And that could be an opportunity to showcase a rotating visual, visual art exhibition.
Great suggestion. Great idea.
That's one of the good ones.
I didn't want to leave it hanging there. It was a good one and not a bad one. Any, yeah. Commissioner Fox?
Thank you, Sibylle, so much. I just wanted to say thank you. I really think this is one of the things that definitely makes our city stand out, brings us together. A few months ago, when you organized the tour downtown, that was a walking tour of some of the highlights and it was pouring rain.
And it was pouring rain, and what, about a hundred people showed up. I didn't even finish the whole thing. I met you at the end, because I was like, I'm not gonna go out there in the rain. And literally, not one other person left. They just followed you. And I feel like that's just a testament to how people, like we're talking about, people can gripe about some issues. But this is one of the things that actually brings everybody together, no matter what they think about other things. They all seem to really appreciate the art and what you're doing. So it's fantastic that they'll be able to sort of take their own walking tours, I think, now that we have this online. And, you know, other cities, I went to Austin recently, and it's one of the top-ten lists of like murals you should see. It's like a top thing to do in the city when you Google what to do in Austin. And so, you know, hopefully that's what, you know, something that we can look for in the future when we have our new marketing person. Maybe this is one of the things you Google and find, you know, top-ten things to do. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lambert?
Speaking of marketing, will you have some marketing materials for us to take to our neighborhood associations and share with them? I have some upcoming meetings, and I know with the holidays, they'll be well-attended, so the sooner the better. We can make sure to get this out to everyone.
Absolutely do that. Absolutely.
Any other questions, comments? Well, Sibylle, thank you very much. And you're off to a very exciting start in the expansion of your position. And it only confirms the decision to bring you on in this capacity, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Wow, that's a first. Okay, okay, all right. Uh, thank you again. Mayor's Matters, a couple things, commissioners. The National League of Cities is having their annual conference in November. And I don't know if any of you are going, but we, the city needs to designate someone as a delegate to attend the business meeting. Is anyone going?
So far, Commissioner Warren said she's attending.
Okay, all right. So at some point, we need to have a resolution done to designate her. I will be there as well, but typically, it's usually a commissioner that represents the city.
Yeah, we'll try to get it on for this coming meeting.
Okay. I wanted to give a brief report on my trip to DC. I was there for a couple reasons. The first was, there is Bloomberg, Michael Bloomberg, the former mayor of New York City. Over the, since he has retired, he's formed Bloomberg Philanthropies. In any event, that organization has made a conscious effort to work and train mayors. They have typically sponsored like two-week trips to Harvard. And they're in intensive seminars. COVID kind of changed that. But then also, for the last ten years, this is the tenth, they have sponsored, for lack of a better word, collaborations, Cities in Action, of mayors throughout the world. So it was in DC this year. It was my first time attending. I was a member of the Class of 2022, where we did the, it wasn't really training. But when COVID hit, they, Bloomberg and John Hopkins sponsored weekly virtual sessions to talk about COVID, the data, et cetera, which I found to be a lifesaver because as you all go back in your minds, I to what we were all thinking during COVID. It was a very scary time. Nobody really knew. You didn't know what data you could trust. And so I found these weekly sessions with the Bloomberg Group to be a lifeline, quite frankly. And so as a result of my participation in that, I was able now to get invited to the City Lab. So that was in DC, a number of sessions, a number of different speakers. And it's also just the opportunity to collaborate and network with other mayors. A lot of times when you're in this seat, you can feel like a lone ranger, particularly if you only are in the silo of your own city, which we certainly love. But when you get around other mayors, you find out that there are some commonalities of issues, whether it's affordability of housing, whether it's homelessness, whether it's public safety. And so, you, and then you can hear from subject matter experts on different ideas and stuff. So that was very, very exciting to be there. Coincidentally, there was an event sponsored by the White House on Thursday morning, which is something they call Communities in Action, was sponsored by the Department of Intergovernmental Affairs. And they were bringing representatives of the state. They did it for, they've done it for a number of other states. I think Florida is the fourth one. So not only did they have elected officials from throughout the state, but they had some community leaders, some nonprofit leaders. And the idea was to hear from cabinet heads on the programs that had been passed under the Biden administration, whether it's the CARES Act, whether it's Inflation Reduction Act, and, you know, all those programs that were sending a lot of money. And then to hear from us as community representatives what our stories were in terms of monies that we had received. So there were probably about fifty to sixty folks from Florida, including the mayors of Tampa, St. Pete, Fort Lauderdale, the Miami-Dade mayor, I think she's called a mayor, Miami-Dade County mayor, and myself. And then a number of other community leaders. So we heard from Tom Perez, who used to be Secretary of Labor under the, I believe, under the Obama administration. He's now the head of the Department of Intergovernmental Affairs. Pete Buttigieg, who had just been in West Palm Beach the day before. And there were two or three other cabinet members. I don't have my list in front of me. So they presented to us and talked about some of the accomplishments. And then it was nice to hear what some of the other communities had benefited from. I was proud to brag about the eight-point-three-million-dollar grant we got for the RACE grant that we got that will help out in some of Roosevelt Estates with the street scape and stuff like that. So I bragged about that. So that was, that was pretty exciting. By the way, the Bloomberg thing, I'm sorry, the Bloomberg event, all paid for by Michael Bloomberg and his organization. We stayed at the Waldorf Astoria Hotel in Washington, DC, which used to be the Trump Hotel, the old post office, beautifully appointed. They bought out the entire hotel. There were no other events going. I have no idea what that price tag was. So they paid for our travel, our lodging, and very generous of Michael Bloomberg. But prior to him getting involved with mayors and educating mayors, I don't think there was really an organization that took that to heart. And, you know, as we all know, government closest to the people is that which is most essential. When folks complain about potholes, garbage not getting picked up, they don't call Tallahassee. They don't call Washington, DC. They're gonna call you or me. And so how do we become more effective as leaders? And it takes training. I mean, there's, it's rare that any of us, I know I didn't, you went to a mayor, how to be a mayor class in college. I don't think anything existed. So when you get in this position, there's a lot of uncertainty. There's a learning curve. And so the Bloomberg organization with, what they're doing with the training and development of mayors, I think it serves a very, very valuable function. So I was honored to be there, to interact, and hopefully will continue to participate in years to come. And so I just wanted to share. And I do have some ideas, Ms. Johnson and senior staff. They hate it when I go to these things, because I always come back with some ideas. So yes, I've got a pocketful, Ms. Johnson, that we will discuss later, of exciting possibilities for our city. So that's why I was in DC. And hopefully we'll just have some tangible discussions about some specifics.
Mayor, can you repeat that statement again about our perspective when you come back? But, never mind.
Just think about the Eagles winning last night, Ms. Johnson. All right, okay, that's all I have. Anything for the good of the body, commissioners? Yeah, Commissioner Warren?
Did you ask, did he just happen to, Spitera come in because you asked him, or it was just coincidental?
They were supposed to be here, and I think there was a mix-up, so he was coming to try to catch that presentation.
Just because we were just talking about it, to have him just briefly mention what they're, if they have anything upcoming, given this CJAC conversation. I don't know if you want to skip back?
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to put him on the spot, but.
I love putting them on the spot. It's fun.
Yeah, unto the mic, please, because this is being recorded. Good morning. And I don't know if you know what the topic was. CJAC came to talk to us about.
Crime and Grime.
Crime and Grime program. I don't know if you're familiar with that. Basically, the gentleman who spoke to, why don't you talk about it, Commissioner?
So as you know, you're at most of the Criminal Justice Advisory Committee meetings. There's been some talk about how to have the committee be more involved in engagement with the public. And, you know, they've been very involved with the basketball event, I can't remember.
Tamron Slam.
Tamron Slam, which has been very successful. And it's an opportunity for our police officers to get out there and meet our youth and meet the public. And this is kind of just an extension of what we've already been doing, I believe, when it comes to the peace walks and it comes to those type of things of extending that. And Crime and Grime is where you get all city departments to come out and not just look at opportunities for public safety and engaging that way, but also look at blight and look at areas that could be improved by, you know, code enforcement, whether it's the writing of citations, or whether it's picking up garbage, or whatnot. And so they have, you know, brought the idea to us that they want to kind of formally start this Crime and Grime walk. And, you know, I think we just wanted to see what your perspective or the police department's perspective on maybe expanding the peace walks to add some of these other elements.
I think that's an excellent idea, like the mayor had mentioned about, you know, we have the monthly crime meetings. And typically, you know, we hear about crime, but we also hear about potholes and traffic and garbage as well. So I think that's right on point for what we need to do. We would fully support that.
Commissioner Ward?
The reason I brought you up is because you guys are kind of already doing that with Keep West Palm Beach Beautiful. And so I wanted you to maybe talk about, because, you know, two of the last police meetings, you've mentioned that, that, hey, we're going out, we have a group of people. And so I was trying to understand the difference between Crime and Grime and what the initiatives are now, and then invite everybody to come out to your, I don't know if you have the next one planned yet or not, but to have everyone come out when the next one is planned. Because you did have code. I don't think you had fire. We had code, Keep Us Palm Beautiful, I think Penny Redford's office, somebody from Penny Redford's, maybe not, and then police.
Yeah, so through Dwayne White, we coordinated, you know, code was already planning on doing code walks like we used to do in the past. We've started that. We partnered with Dwayne White to identify sanitation issues as well. But I think that, I think we should expand it absolutely and address all, you know, concerns of the neighborhoods.
Well, Ms. Johnson, I would like to keep my request on record. If we could bring Captain Spitera, the chief, together with the gentleman that spoke, Kevin Harris, see if there's some common ground there, that we can either continue what we're doing, expand what we're doing, tweak what we're doing to accomplish that purpose. And then get back to the commissioners at some point with what our plan is going forward, if it's gonna be kind of staying on the same course or adjusting it, but at least have the conversation.
Will do. And just coincidentally, in our one-on-one this afternoon, you know, I have a proposal to present to you for your consideration that relates to this matter.
Fantastic. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, well, that's all I have. So this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.